Right, I'm thinking that too. Okay, well hey, let me, let me step back then. I'd like to officially call this meeting to order. This is a work session of the City Council of the City of Manzanita on the currently blue and beautiful Pacific. So, um, welcome to everyone. I think most of the folks who are, at least whose names I can see are familiar with the workshop format, but just in the interest of clarity, I'll say these are work sessions, uh, and they're called that for a reason. Uh, gives council a chance to dive deeper into a couple of topics that merit that attention that we do not always have time for with the amount of business that the city needs to conduct during its regular council meeting. One of the differences between a council meeting and a workshop is that council meetings welcome and have a structure that not just allows, but welcomes public input. In the format we use for the workshops, it's not a time for direct public input. So comments and presentation and questions will come from the city council in its entirety, from city staff that are relevant, and then in this case, from a few folks who serve on uh, one of the city's committees and will be part of the presentation. So, uh, having completed the call to order, we'll get going. Uh, the first thing I want to do is give you a heads up around a shift in the agenda, which is part of why, um, I think we're missing a couple of people from the STR committee at this point. So we had planned, uh, the first item to be led by Dan Weitzel, a Water Right and Water Management and Conservation Plan update. We did not have the materials prepared in time enough for this session. They are coming and I hope it's not going to be too much longer, but we're not in good shape to have a thorough presentation and discussion. So we're going to defer that. We will let council know, um, and give you appropriate notice when the materials are ready and we can do that. So we're going to move past, uh, the Water Right and Water Management. We will be coming back to that. Next up, uh, we've got the LOC legislative priorities. And Leila, it might be good for you to give a little background on this one. I, I, I think I've got it now that I've read it. This is my first time of going through uh, the priority list from the League of Oregon Cities and why it matters and how we participate, but that's our, our next item. And then I think by the time we finish with that, we should be able to get the STR folks, uh, here a little sooner, maybe than they had anticipated. So Leila, I will turn it over to you.
Thanks Mayor. Um, yeah, so the League of Oregon Cities is an organization that we are a part of and pretty much every city in the state of Oregon is part of. And they provide all kinds of, um, support to local jurisdictions like ours, um, including lobbying efforts during the legislative session. And so this is the second time I've done this with the Manzanita City Council. But each year LOC sends out uh, a list of legislative priorities that they have developed over the, you know, over a period of time, trying to address issues that were brought up either in the last legislative session or in the interim timeframe between, um, sessions. So things that have risen to the top and, um, they intend to kind of move forward with when, when the legislative session starts. And so they create a voter's ballot, um, and within that ballot, there's a number of different items included in that. I can't remember off the top of my head how many there were this year. And then they send that out to every city and ask that, that the cities provide them with their top five priorities. And so the way that I've done this is that, um, I ask all the members of council to kind of individually review the priorities that LOC has put forward and to share their top priorities. And then we put it into kind of a matrix and I'll walk you through that. And so the royal we here was Cody did this for me this year. So he's going to make me look really good because I have a nice presentation that goes through everything. Um, so we see where there's commonalities and then I add my recommendations into that as well. So I did that here and you'll see we have sort of a, a tally matrix that shows what council did and then with my input in there. And then I have some suggestions about how we proceed. But what I'd like to get to today is consensus around those top five priorities. And so this is just an opportunity for council to get familiar with what the league is up to, what things, um, are important to them as individual counselors and also with the full council and the community in mind, what things that they feel need to be, um, advanced. And then, um, we can have a discussion about that because there's agreement you'll see in some places. And then there's, um, several that were identified by just one member of council. So, um, with that, I'm just going to hop into this presentation. I always ask, can you see my screen?
Looks good.
Okay, great. Okay, so. So I have multiple screens. I switch it on one and then the other is, we're looking at. This is not working. Bear with me. Okay, so the voting matrix for city council priorities. So each of you sent me your list of what your top five priorities are. So that's what's listed under the priorities. Um, and we have little summaries of each of these items. So we can go through that in a moment. But it shows you kind of where things overlap and then where there's, um, places that individual counselors have interest. So the kind of top three that we saw, not unsurprisingly, are related to infrastructure funding, lodging tax flexibility and the restoration of recreational immunity. So the four out of the five of you agreed that those were priorities. And then full funding and alignment of housing production and investment in community resiliency and climate planning were other places that there was overlap. And then the rest that you see here, um, were ones that individual counselors selected, um, based on their review. This includes my votes, uh, which changes it slightly, um, but you'll see that in, in terms of the top three that came up previously, that the priorities I included are related to infrastructure funding, lodging tax flexibility, restoration of recreational immunity. I put my vote in for the housing production piece and then shifting from a gas tax to a road user fee. I'm going to put forward a suggestion and then I think we can pause for a moment and then I can go through, um, kind of what each of these priorities are, and then we can come back to that suggestion. Does that work for everyone? Okay. So my thought is we use the top four that landed to the top and start with that as our top four. And then we have a discussion about the remaining two that had two or more votes. We don't have to do it that way. We can go through and debate all of these if you, if you'd like, but that would be my recommendation. So our ballot would look something like, and of course it's out of order. In any case, these would be four and then we would talk through these two. But why don't we go ahead and go through and just talk about the basics of each of these items? And then we can come back to this list and ideally walk away with our top five priorities. Okay, so infrastructure funding. So this is really, um, LOC kind of advocating for a comprehensive infrastructure package. That tends to be, as we well know, um, one of the most challenging things for a smaller jurisdiction like ours to implement because of cost. Um, so this would include, you know, system upgrades, capacity to serve needed housing. The city of Manzanita, um, did receive an infrastructure award, $2.79 million to implement the classic street waterline extension. So we were a beneficiary of a similar type of legislation that that was done through the needed housing work. Um, things like deferred maintenance, seismic and wild resiliency. Um, so they're talking about both programmatic infrastructure investments as well as additional funding to support needed housing affordability. And as being a recipient of infrastructure funding for needed housing, I think we can all appreciate why that was important. So it may not be directly impactful to us. Um, it could be in the future if there's additional infrastructure needs we have that we can tie, tie to needed housing. Uh, the lodging tax flexibility, so that's the transient lodging tax. That's the, the main source of funding for the city of Manzanita and for many coastal communities. Um, that provides some, you know, the majority of the resources that go into our general fund and also fund other activities as well through the tourism fund. So there's an interest in increasing that flexibility of that. So it's a very specific limitation. So just kind of a reminder to folks that we currently have, the city levies a 9% TLT, transient lodging tax. 7% of that, because we did it early, we can use for general government use. So that goes into the general fund. Of the remaining 2%, 70% of that goes into a restricted fund, which is the tourism fund, and then the other remaining 30 can go into the general fund. We're talking about the 70% portion. And so that is fairly restricted. It's restricted to things like, um, facilities, things really focused on, uh, promoting tourism. Our destination management plan, which we talked about at the last city council session, was an outcome of that, um, because we are starting to see a shift more towards not promoting tourism, but managing tourism. As a result of that sort of shift, uh, we've been able to help pay for some of our public work staff time in maintaining these facilities. And that's also where we were able to, um, help support a code enforcement officer whose focus is on livability and, um, dealing with code-related issues related to tourism. So we have been able to, within the rules, um, use those funds. But there's also been discussion about using those funds for things like road infrastructure. So for example, that's one of the things that the city of Manzanita doesn't actually have a consistent funding source beyond gas tax, which is a very limited amount of money because it's based on a per capita basis. And we'll talk about this when we get to the gas tax and road utility fund. Um, that revenue is going down because cars are getting more efficient. So that's something that we think about, um. Affordable housing has been floated as something because a lot of our tourists and ourselves, the locals rely on the local businesses here. But if there's nowhere for those folks to live, then those businesses suffer. And I think we can all probably, uh, bring up several examples of how that has impacted, um, us personally, people we know and business owners we know in our town. And so that's something that has also come up as being one of the potential uses of this funding because otherwise it's, it's pretty restricted. Um, and I think, uh, additional law enforcement has also been proposed as an idea. So these are some of the things that the league will be taking to the legislature to say, hey, we want to see if there's, you know, this management of tourism actually goes beyond just the provision of facilities and trying to promote more people to come here. We need to be able to, uh, manage some of the impacts of that tourism on our community, particularly when we don't have funding sources for that. Uh, the next one, I think we're all fairly familiar with, just a reminder, sort of this restoration of recreational immunity. So this kind of takes, um, we've got a bit of a stay on this one, but, um, this is really to protect cities and other landowners who open their property for recreational purposes against tort liability claims. And so we recently, there was a recent case that occurred in Lincoln County that really put a lot of, um, really put this into limbo. There's been a bit of a Band-Aid put in place that we're not as concerned, but we want to be able to ensure that going forward, that that um, immunity continues. And so this would be something that the league would work on in detail with, um, the legislature. So full funding and alignment for housing production. So we're really just starting to get into our comprehensive plan and our housing, um, our regulatory framework. So updating our housing ordinance. Another thing that we're going to be required to do by the Department of Land Conservation and Development is a, a, a needs analysis. We call an HNA, Housing Needs Analysis. Um, that will be, uh, a quantitative study of the future growth potential for residential housing capacity in our city. So we'll do that analysis, the revising the rules. I just sat in on a meeting earlier this week that described some of the, uh, proposed changes to those administrative rules. And out of that, we will also have to develop a housing production strategy. So how, here's how much housing we need by income range. How are we going to get there? And so what this would do is provide, um, support and, um, resources to help cities actually implement that strategy. This is, uh, this is similar to one we had last legislative session. So another, um, set of rules came out from the Department of Land Conservation and Development related to climate, um, to climate, climate resiliency. So this is really focusing on providing resources, um, that will bring these services together in coordination with public and private partnerships. And so it's a way to help expand cities like ours that may not have a ton of capacity to apply for complicated federal grants and other grants to effectively capture those opportunities. This is a shift from a gas tax to a road user fee. So it would be replacing the gas tax with a road user fee and then protecting the local government's authority to capture gas tax. So we'd still be able to levy our gas tax, but this concept of a road user fee, and I'm not an expert in this, so I have very limited knowledge on this. I'll just put that forward. But this is, um, what I do understand about it is it's looking at what a vehicle impact or vehicles impact would be on the roadway system and trying to find a more equitable way to just, to charge for that and to develop a more stable revenue stream, given that gas tax is generally going down, although the price of gas goes up. So sometimes that isn't always the case. Um, this is really related to the transportation package. It is a multimodal transportation package. Again, it's continued investment in transit and bike head programs for safety. That's something that's relevant to us in terms of implementing our TSP. Uh, this is really focused on state highway funds, um, and providing resources to the great streets, safe routes to school and the small city allotment program. Uh, this one was also selected by a member of council. It's, uh, supporting actions to maintain affordable and reliable energy sources. Um, supporting energy efficiency, renewable energy, battery storage to reduce overall energy costs and demand. So as a citywide initiative. Um, employment lands readiness and availability. Um, so this is something I've worked in my past life when I was at Metro and, uh, even in Milwaukee, where we had significant industrial land. Oftentimes those lands are contaminated. And so, um, we actually benefited from a program that wasn't related to the industrial or employment lands, but was a brownfields grant that we got when we remediated, um, the asbestos on Underhill Plaza when we began construction. Uh, so this would expand programs like that. So if there is, um, the one program we worked on in, at Metro was petroleum-based, um, brownfields. So those brownfields that were contaminated with petroleum. I worked on a project in Milwaukee that was contaminated with petroleum byproducts. We got a grant to help clean that up so that we can then actually redevelop it into a higher and best use. Um, we don't have any employment lands in the city of Manzanita. And employment lands, again, I'm talking about industrial and large-scale, um, like office and other types of uses. Our commercial districts wouldn't actually, I don't think would fall into this category. Uh, funding and expanding public and intercommunity transit. So this would be expanding funding for transit operations statewide, intercommunity service. So we have an intercommunity bus that runs here. Um, service expansion and changing policy to allow those funds for operations and maintenance. Typically those funds are only targeted towards capital investments. Um, at least that's what I remember from my time in the transportation world. Uh, placed-based planning efforts, uh, so advocating for funding to do this work, um, across the state and to continue to help support communities that face unique water supply challenges. So there's a lot of cities in our state that have drought issues and other issues that affect their water supply. And this is also, this is another one. Again, this was actually on LOC's, uh, voter guide last time as well, which is expanding broadband infrastructure and the planning implementation of that. And so, um, really oppose, the opposition would be, LOC would oppose any pre-emptions that impede a local government's ability to maintain infrastructure standards in our own right of way. Um, we have the ability to manage that access currently. Um, that isn't always the case in some smaller communities. Okay, and that's just for folks that want to know, this is where all of that information is. You can learn about that and more. So what I'll do is I'll go back to the matrix and I open it up, hand it back to the mayor to lead a discussion through, um, through this and see what you guys think about that recommendation. My feelings won't be hurt if you want to do something different, but I wanted to give you something to start with and to go from there.
Okay.
Thank you, buddy, for the nice PowerPoint.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, so it, I'm going to go with the, uh, proposed method. So it's pretty clear. We've got uh, the top four priorities laid out. Um, it seems reasonable to me then to spend our time looking at the next two, probably not in a huge amount of detail. Um, investment in community resiliency and climate planning, and then the shift from the gas tax to a road user fee. So for the counselors who did, uh, put their vote in for one of those or both of those, maybe we could start with just a comment about why, why you've got it on the list the way that you do. And then we can use our time to focus on a simple choice, hopefully, between, um, the investment in community resilience and the shift from the gas tax. Is everybody okay with that approach?
And I'll stop sharing so you can see each other. Does that work? Or would you rather have this up?
What?
I'd rather have it up.
Yeah, let's have it up. Uh, Catherine, I, I just have a comment. I, the investment in community resilience and climate planning was kind of number six on my list. So I would be more than willing and in fact encouraged, uh, to move my vote for the 2025 transportation package to investment in community resilience and climate planning.
Okay, so, uh, Jerry, do you want to, do you, is it, no, Jerry, you want to make a comment or do you have any feel for, um, the two priorities and how you look at them today after we've had the discussion? I, yeah, go ahead.
First of all, uh, it was hard to settle on five, so, uh, the fact that I didn't, uh, check full funding and alignment for housing production, uh, doesn't reflect that, I don't think it's a priority, but, uh, you gotta, you gotta cut it at five. Um, the shift from a gas tax to a road user fee, I think Leila acknowledged that, uh, it's not particularly clear what that's all about. I, I'm not sure I'm, uh, clear. I just know that the current method of, uh, collecting and distributing gas tax, uh, in Oregon, uh, is inequitable from the perspective of a small town like ours that has a small population, but a much, much larger, uh, population of road users. Uh, so if in fact, that legislation is intended to address that inequity, I think it should be a priority for Manzanita. Uh, we get our gas taxes based on a population of about 600, but we have thousands and thousands and thousands of people who use our roads, uh, and the gas taxes they're paying. Even if they're filling up at the Shell station on 101, those gas taxes go back to where they came from in Oregon. Um, even our second homeowners, um, if they're down here driving on our roads, the gas taxes that they're paying to drive on our roads go back to Beaverton or Gresham or wherever they live. So if there, if we can find out more about that, uh, particular proposed legislation, and if it does uh, address that inequity, then I think that is a significant issue for Manzanita. Um, in terms of the, uh, climate, uh, planning, uh, um, resources measure, uh, that's just a, you know, it, to me, it's a, it's a priority that ranks along with, um, housing and, and infrastructure funding in general. I mean, I think all communities, uh, need to be participating in that conversation and that process because climate change is such a, uh, dire issue and, and, uh, you know, we can't keep looking at Washington to fix it because that's not going to happen. We gotta put the pressure on from the community level, um, up through the states. And so, um, I feel pretty good about both of, uh, those two priorities, but I realize that, you know, we can only, can only put forward five. Um, I'm very happy with the first four that there's broad consensus on. Um, the one thing I would suggest is that, you know, this is what we're telling LOC, uh, that we think are, are priorities. Uh, but then we also are represented, um, in the legislature, uh, by a senator and a, and a state rep. And I think that separately and apart from LOC, we can certainly take the city's specific priorities to our individual legislators and make sure they know how important they are to us.
Agreed. So I'm going to take a stab at this then. So is there anyone, any counselor who would object then to making our, our fifth choice out of this, the shift in the gas tax? Okay, then we've got our consensus.
And I'm, I'm curious to know how much do we get in gas tax normally? Uh, and what's the, what's the budgetary impact of the figure?
Well, I don't think we can answer the, how much this would improve it because we don't actually know what the legislation would be. Going back to Leila's comment, I don't have off the top of my head the number that goes into the budget. It's not a, it's not much.
It's, it's about 45.
Forty-five, oh, yeah. I'm looking to double check. I think Jerry is right.
But I think the, the reason, um, I would be in favor of this one, just stepping up, stepping back and looking at our city, but also the citizens of our city, which who we all drive on. None of us, so far as I know, none of us end our driving at the city limits of Manzanita. So this is, uh, this is really important for the county. Um, and some of the road projects we'd love to see get done that are no, are not funded and won't be unless something shifts with how revenue goes for roads and road improvement. And it's also one of the critical priorities for the, the state and ODOT. So I think it's a, it could benefit Manzanita. It's not clear for what we know with this group of people in the room, how much it might benefit us. But it looks like it's a, an attempt to improve what we've got. Um, and that's, you've got the number, Tom, for the current. Was there something more specific you were looking for? Just kind of a, a ballpark of, of what the current revenue was from it?
That's all.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I, and trying to look into the, uh, crystal ball about what a road user fee is going to bring to the city is impossible. Um, but I like to feel comfortable that I'm not taking something that's big and trying to replace it with something that's unknown.
Yeah, Brad, do you have a comment?
Then, uh, for Leila, our current revenue received for the gas tank, gas tax goes into the general fund. Is that correct?
It actually, so I actually want to back up because I feel like I might have missed something. So we get the, we get a per capita allocation from the state that's part of our revenue sharing. And that is dedicated to the transportation fund. We don't have a gas station in our jurisdiction. If we had a gas station in our jurisdiction, then we would actually get the revenue from that. Um, in addition to that. So this is real, this. So this is, this is related to that. So this would help these counselors, like I mentioned, make it more equitable, um, as I understand it. But again, I don't have tons of information about how.
It's, it's a restricted fund.
Currently, yeah, so, because we, you can also have, so the gas station that's just down the street is not in the city of Manzanita, so that gas tax doesn't come to us.
My, my question was more about if, if, if the road user fee passed, says that revenue would be restricted to roads, we think, correct?
We, so, no, um, it could go into the general fund. We, as a practice, have allocated, that's one of the things that funds, for example, the public works staff that are assigned to road maintenance. So part of what, the general fund supplements that fund, um, but.
I'm, I'm fine.
We have internally done that. So we could put it in the general fund if we choose to, or we could allocate that specifically to the roads.
If, if it's not a restricted fund, I'm fine with that choice to support that because if we have the freedom to use those funds as we choose, we could use them towards resiliency and climate planning resources.
So, uh, Leila, is that, isn't that per capita?
Yes, yeah, what we receive.
So it depends on the size of our, of our city. Okay, so I, uh, I, I am going to put my vote in investment in community resilience and climate planning resources. Um, that doesn't mean, I mean, I just, uh, I, that's where I would put my vote. So if we go for, for the gas tax, uh, I would object, not strongly, but.
I don't want us to get too hung up on this five versus six because in reality, the, from what I've learned and how the league presents this, that we're one city voting out of all the cities in Oregon. And, and in fact, they're working on all of this. So our, our decision of which goes in it is not, uh, just say it, it's not monumental in terms of influencing what they do and they don't do. And we still have the opportunity to, uh, advocate with our, um, state senator and state representative and do all the other things we could do with the League of Oregon Cities and the other cities around us if we find that we have, uh, if we find that we have things in common, which I would be pretty surprised if their top list wasn't awfully similar to what we already have. So, you know, I, nobody in the, nobody in the call is gonna say, investment in community resilience and climate planning resources isn't important. It is, and if we, you know, if we could do all of it, we would. So, um, let me take a stab at this then from a different angle, um, now that Linda has shifted, for one thing, and we've had the discussion. Since we don't on the call, actually, the shift from the gas tax to a road user fee is probably one of the most tangible, small, but really important things on this list. Everything else we have is kind of at a higher level of, of impact, and it is a broader project. So knowing how important the climate resiliency is to us here on the coast of Oregon, um, one of us, well, two of us on the call are like a half a block up. So resiliency to climate change, um, and how our community cares about that is really high. And I, I don't, I don't mind, I don't mind, um, shifting and going with the, uh, community resilience. So let me try it from that angle. Do we have, do we have consensus on, uh, community resilience and climate planning resources as the one of five? These aren't in priority order really, but one of five for us that we submit? Would anybody object to that? Okay, so let's do that. And it doesn't mean that we won't see how we can advocate and help on the transportation front. That's really important for the county, we're a voice in the county as well. So there are other ways we can, there are other ways we can support and get at that. So that gives us, um, infrastructure funding that, which was referenced twice, which is why I only have four votes on there because I, I double voted for infrastructure funding. And then lodging tax flexibility, we all understand the importance of that. And, um, we all know that we're in much better shape than many of the communities because of, around us because of the foresight, um, our town had, our city leaders had in capturing that seven percent way back when. We've, we've gone through in council restoration of recreational immunity. We understand the importance of that. Housing production, same, and then climate, um, climate planning resources and investment in, in community resiliency. So that sounds like something we can proudly say we are behind, and the other things matter very much also, but those will be our votes. Okay, great. Okay, thank you, thank you, Cody. Thanks for the, uh, you know, it's good, actually, I found it helpful to read through that whole thing. Um, there's a lot, it just is a reminder of just, even though we are a small community, we face almost everything, almost everything on that list, um, could affect us in some way. And, and it's just a reminder of how watchful and mindful we need to be about what's going on around us in the state as well as within the confines of our own community. So thanks for the help on that, thanks for getting it to our attention, Leila, so we could talk about it this afternoon.
Catherine, before we leave the topic, uh, Leila, can you tell us, is, is LOC effective in their lobbying? Do they generally get listened to?
Yeah, I, I actually, I do think that, I can't point to a specific example right now, but I know, um, that.
Two points. The two point seven million, the two point seven million.
Yeah, that's, yes, I can't point, just, thank you, Linda. Because of that, right, they did a survey, they asked us some information, the city responded. That information was sent out to all the legislators and our legislative, um, coastal caucus jumped on that. And then a lot of coastal communities, a lot of communities just Oregon-wide benefited from that. So yeah, they're, they do a lot for us, and, um, I think are, yeah, are very effective. I'm embarrassed that I didn't. The agent just texted me too, he's like, two point seven billion, I'm like, sorry.
It's all right, we sometimes don't see what's right in front of our faces. It's, so, okay. Any other questions before we move on? All good, okay, so thank you, and thank you, Cody. All right, so I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Linda Kozlowski to introduce our next topic, which is the Short Term Rental Committee Occupancy Discussion. So Linda, you can introduce the, um, and talk about the new chair of the committee, and also just remind us and frame us up for the kind of discussion you wanna have today, which is not gonna be as in-depth as some of the other presentations that we've. So if you could set expectations on that for us as well, that would be great.
I would be delighted to, so, uh, to, actually, just a little bit of history. So the Short Term Rental, uh, Committee has been working on, uh, the, uh, suggestions for policy alternatives for the city council. That's been driven by the fact that we have a freeze on short-term rental. Uh, any additional numbers or any changes in the numbers, a freeze until, uh, I believe it's March of, March or April of 2025. So the mandate to the Short Term Rental Committee was to come back to us with some suggestions or alternatives, or to suggest we do what we've always been doing. And they've spent a long time working on that. And we came back a couple of sessions ago with an overview document that talked about a lot of the analysis the Short Term Rental, uh, Committee had done. And then we had an executive summary which outlined specific policy alternatives that we were, uh, bringing to the council to discuss, to see, uh, it, to, to see if, if they were something the council wanted to do and to have a robust discussion about how and why those, uh, alternatives have been suggested. After we presented that, that report, uh, I had a couple of requests from council to also look at occupancy to, and we had, the count, the committee had been talking about that for some time. So we went back, uh, to work again, to come back with a, uh, policy around short-term, uh, around occupancy for short-term rentals, and that's what we will present today. So what we're doing is we, you have two, uh, reports. We will add this as an addendum to those reports, and, uh, we will come back to the council in the future to have a, a, what I'm hoping is a robust discussion about that. Also, in your packet, you, uh, may also see, or you should see if you haven't yet, uh, a, uh, suggestion from a former short-term rental committee member who has, uh, who is a short-term rental owner and had some additional information he wanted to share. And so he's added that to, to the information that you will be able to review. Um, so with that, for the presentation on occupancy, I'd like to introduce Cheryl Augburn. Cheryl has stepped into the leadership role, uh, and, uh, in the few meetings I've been with Cheryl in her leadership role, she is exceptional. I think she's gonna do a great job, I'm really delighted, uh, to have her there. And then Michael Doug Duncan, who is a short-term rental owner, um, and has been, uh, incredibly supportive in many issues around the city, but has a knack, I think, for policy development and has helped us work through what kind of policy and implications those policies would have. So he's been a, a really important part of our short-term rental committee. So with that, I wanna make sure, Cheryl, are you gonna actually, uh, present the program to be, do you wanna share?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, and Nancy, does she, does Cheryl have a, uh, sharing capability?
No, I'm not gonna share because I'm, I, and, as you can see, I'm not on video because I'm having some technical issues, but I'm just, given the amount of time, what I was gonna do was a brief overview of the packet that was distributed. Okay. So everyone has that, is that, um, can we go with that? My apologies, thank you, my apologies, um, I spent a couple hours on, with, on Zoom trying to figure this out last night, and it was all fixed, but it's not fixed this morning. So, I'm sorry, today.
Now.
So you can hear my voice. So as Linda said, this document that we've shared with you is a continuation of the committee's work around establishing the citywide growth measure and then the neighborhood proximity density tool. And then primarily what this is, is the occupants piece. And at our July, or meeting, council raised some questions about occupancy. And so, as Linda said, we dug back into it a little deeper. And so what you have here is in addition to the occupancy recommendations, which is the third piece of that graphic, so it's a three-part or three-tiered recommendation we're making. We also have included a little addendum to the proximity policy as a result of our conversations last month. Um, so, and I, this, my little presentation is very brief, as I was told to keep it short. So if you have any questions, I hope we have time at the end, but we can talk more later. So the current policy is two people per bedroom plus four. And as part of the committee's process, we went ahead and we collected some occupancy data from our own community, as well as we looked at occupancy standards from the regional communities. We also spoke with fire and safety experts in the community about their guidelines for occupancy. And we learned from industry experts that, um, the software that's currently used for booking SDRs does not distinguish between adults or children. So you can't really calculate, um, occupancy based on age. And, and most of the SDR advertisements that we looked up did not differentiate between an adult and a child. They just listed a total occupancy number. So on page two, you'll see this chart, which is, um, we should have had better labels on top, but we were putting it together. What we did is, this shows, chart one, shows all the current licensed SDRs in Manzanita, and they're organized by the maximum number of occupants that they could have in that home. And this is the maximum based on our ordinance, not necessarily what they're advertising. So there's, so in the first column, it's the listed number of occupants, and the second column is the number of homes, so we should have had a note there. So for example, there is one home in Manzanita that has a maximum, maximum of three. And so if we go down the list, we see there are nine homes with an occupancy of four, and so on and so on with, um, we see that big number, one hundred five, with a maximum occupancy of ten. So what we discovered by breaking it out like this is that the average occupancy in an SDR in Manzanita is nine point six, or about ten people. And so currently, as you can see, there are fourteen homes that allow fourteen or more occupants. And that's gonna come up later in our policy recommendation. The second chart is, we did a very informal, uh, survey of advertisements with the, in management of companies in S, in Manzanita for the SDR, sorry about that, I stumbled. And this is based on their current occupancy of two per bedroom plus four and what they're advertising. So we looked at those agencies, we have a sample size that we just picked. So the, for example, on the first one, I looked at thirty-nine of the listings that advertised in Manzanita. Thirty-two of those listings listed their advertised maximum rate under the two per bedroom plus four. Seven homes were right at the maximum, they had listed their occupancy at two per bedroom plus four. So then we looked at the percentage that was under it. And I think that what we were looking for is how in line they were with it. And I think that it's important to note this as we move forward because there's no price reduction. If you rent a home that has maximum occupancy of ten people and you are bringing six people, you are still paying the listed price on the advertisement. So occupancy is not tied to pricing. And in addition to that, we, the use of dynamic pricing with these agencies and, and SDR owners makes it kind of difficult to determine if there's a reduction in total occupancy, will it impact overall pricing? Preliminary, though, it shows that it, it will not because you don't get a discount if you only have six people in a house that sleeps eight. So on page three, you'll find the information of, with the regional data from Tillamook Seaside Bend, Palm Springs, about maximum occupancy rates for SDRs around us. And I was, I'm not, wasn't going to read that for you, I figured you could read that. And the recommendation that we're gonna make today is primarily proactive. We, we find that, um, we believe that establishing a new recommendation for two people per bedroom plus two and a citywide occupancy cap of maximum of fourteen will have little impact on our TLC fund and will have no impact on the, impact on the maximum occupancy for about or more than seventy-five percent of the existing licensed SDRs in Manzanita. The recommendation is proactive, as you can kind of deduce from the data because most of our homes are currently occupying, or listing their occupancy less than the four. But as we all know, new construction is tending toward the larger homes, and we've already begun to see the demolition of small beach cottages to look away for these larger homes. We also heard from community members in conversations with the counselors and back to the survey that our residents prefer not to have large homes that impact the character of the community and operate as small inns rather than homes. When you get over fourteen people in a home, it's a, it's a lot of people. So as you can see, we, you remember, when we looked at the proximity map back in July, the circles, um, I don't know if you can nod if you remember doing that. I don't know. Um, when you have clusters in the proximity radius of larger SDRs, oper, potentially operating at maximum capacity, there were significant numbers of people, which we might, would be traffic, dogs, et cetera, on any given block. And on some of these dead-end streets, which there is one way in and one way out, that could be problematic in terms of not just traffic, but in an emergency situation. And then lastly, so our, our recommendation there, you'll find at the bottom of page four, is that we have a maximum number of occupants would be two, two per bedroom plus two. It includes everyone with the exception of infants age zero to two. And that there is a citywide cap with a maximum of fourteen occupancy occupants. And that we've suggested that this policy would be, um, take effect at the next license renewal cycle for, um, SDR owners. But also in addition to that, we know that there are some folks that, um, book their homes, you know, they stay in July and they book for the next July or August when they leave, that, that we, the city honor those bookings if, for the next summer. So, so people don't have to change their bookings if they've made it. Last, you'll find the addendum to the proximity, um, Last, you'll find the addendum to the proximity policy. So we put two options before councils to consider. Both of these are focused on density, proximity and occupancy of very large STR homes with five or more bedrooms. Option one would be to create a category for homes with five or more bedrooms, and they would be classified as large homes. We, we didn't really have a name for it. You'll notice in some of the other areas, they call them estate homes. We, we just opted for large homes right now. Excuse me. And these homes would count as two in the proximity radius. So two points. So when we demonstrated that at the July meeting, we showed there would be five homes within a radius or five points. So the larger homes with five or more bedrooms would count as two. So that would potentially reduce the actual number of homes within a given radius. Option two, which was a discussion we had with you all a month ago, would be to keep the proximity at five within the radius. And they would equally be weighted with just one point. But that the city, we would also establish a maximum number of occupancy within each radius halo or circle. So you, so for example, you might, we might say there would be 50 people could be within that proximity radius. Both of these options will establish occupancy limits within each proximity radius. That's a mouthful. But I have to say that in the opinion of the committee, we, we believe that option one is more straightforward to implement and manage and would be easier for potential SDR owners to determine whether their home would be permitted. Option two would definitely need further research, and we would need to develop an implementation and management plan for it. So that concludes my part. Do you have any question? I know that was a lot fast, but I was operating under the 10-minute plan. So I wanted to get it all on the table.
Well, Cheryl, I think that was great. It, it, it is difficult without kind of seeing something in front of you. But my suggestion is, let's include this with the other two plans. We will bring it back with adequate time for council to really review it before we talk about it and then talk about it in council. When we, it will be a little bit more in the future. So that'll give the council time to look at all of those options. I just want to thank you again for all the work that you've done.
Thank you.
It really, it really, it really takes a lot of conversation, a lot of research. I will also encourage you to, there's another, a package that was presented that, that I'd also appreciate or suggest that you review. It's not part of the, the current short-term rental committee's presentation, but I think it has interesting information in it and would be appropriate to review at the same time. So I will be back with you in working in conjunction with Catherine and Leila with plenty of time to review this before we begin to discuss it and come to some kind of conclusion, hopefully before March of 2025. So thank you.
Thank you.
So any, any comments, anything, anybody just kind of? Okay, I think, I think we got a plan.
Hang on there, hang on there, miss.
Oh, there's Jerry, okay.
I just have one question. I don't need a, an answer anytime real soon. But I, I remember at our last session, it was very helpful to know that using the halo approach that was discussed last time, it would only have a relatively modest impact on the existing inventory of SDRs in town. I think 10 homes theoretically would be affected. And, and obviously not affected because we would go with, you know, sort of a phasing out over time. But i- if you were to implement that option where large houses were counted as two, I assume the math would change on how many current houses would be impacted. So that would be a really important number to have. Last time it was 10, I believe. And I, I suspect that the number would, would jump and it would be good to know that. So if you could try to drill down on that, that'd be great.
We can do that. We can definitely do that. Again, I think it would be with the proximity that would, it would fall within that halo. So any changes made would be through attrition when the house was sold or someone lost a license because they didn't want to do it anymore. So it wouldn't have an immediate impact on anyone. It would be a proactive move to manage larger homes in the community. But we can get you those numbers.
Good.
Lots more discussion, I think, and maybe a little bit more right now. Tom?
Got a couple of questions. On the discussion about regional occupancy context, the passages about seaside make a reference to the occupancy of a VRD. And I don't know that I know what VRD stands for.
I believe it's a vacation rental dwelling. It, it, it's an STR by a different name.
Okay.
I looked, I actually looked that up too. I was unsure.
Okay. On your proximity policy addendum, option one. So that's solely with regards to proximity, counting these large houses as two. Would they be required to have two licenses then?
No, no. It would just be two points. It would be a management tool to regulate large homes, clustering of large homes. Because one of the things we discussed on some feedback we, we had was when you go to rent a vacation home and it's you and your family of six and next door to you is a, a home that sleeps 14 and across the street is another home that sleeps 14, that's a lot. And that may change how I feel about my stay in Manzanita because I had these very large homes. So what we'd do over time is it would just regulate within that concentrated area. Remember, like 100 feet each or 100 yard feet each way, the number of homes. They would not have to pay more or there would be no, nothing like that. It would simply mean through attrition, we would redistribute that. That, that halo would count as five of that area with the two points per large homes.
All right. And then in option two, can somebody please talk to me a little bit about the hurdles of enforcement of that? It seems to me like it's really going to, that would be really difficult to police. but I, there's, there's a part of me that says that occupancy may be more important to me than the number of, of rentals in, in the halo.
Right, but each halo, which, or, or radius has, has potentially five homes or, or fewer, depending on where it stands now. Each of those homes varies at occupancy. So I think from our standpoint, the reason we thought option one would be the preferable way to go is we would have to calculate within each halo. So let's say you had an area where there were, this is just an example off the top of my head. I had three homes and another home comes in as an STR. But what if that occupancy within that radius was already at 48? I think therein lies the problem that what do you do? So I think it is something that would mean, would be harder to enforce. It would be harder to manage logistically in terms of how do we implement and manage the number of the occupancy within each halo. That's, that's exactly why we kind of, after discussion, we concluded that we would have to do a lot more work to figure out how exactly that would look if we went with something like that? And how would it be managed and implemented and regulated? Where if you went with option one, the larger homes would count as two. It's very clear to see, if I'm thinking of renting my home, I can look at my proximity radius and I can see there's already five dots in there. And so I, I need to put on a waiting list or there's three dots in there and I can go in. It just seemed a little cleaner and more transparent to us.
So on, and on the enforcement end of things, if we went to this, to something where we're actually counting the number of occupants, would we then be sending Max out in the middle of the night to count how many people are in each house?
No, this would be nothing, this, we have an occupancy, maximum occupancy standard now. It's two per bedroom plus four. We don't, that, where that, where I think most of the enforcement comes in is when the STR homeowner lists their home for rent on their advertisement. They all, they list a maximum number of occupancy occupants. So it would be adjusted there. So that goes through the management companies when potential visitors register and rent. They list how many people are coming. And again, it's, it's, no one's policing that now. And, and we're just assuming that the owners and the agencies are following those guidelines.
And there's a complaint process that a neighbor can go through if they see something that looks different than it's supposed to be. So.
Right, exactly.
That's how it works, yeah.
So it really isn't, it isn't a change in the system. It's just a change in the, the number.
Okay, so before we wrap up, I would just say very clearly, it's not clear at all where our decisions will be around the radius question, let alone two options for that. And it's not clear at all that council will do anything different with occupancy. So I know, I know a lot of hard work goes into this and we'll continue to go into this, but none of this should be seen as a given. It's all subject to some important conversation, the policy conversation that council has to have. And so, yeah, I'm looking forward to more work on this. It's helpful and I continue to appreciate getting the information about the comparisons to the county and especially our nearby cities because we're all in this, it's a marketplace in a way, and we're all in that together. So it's important for us to understand, as you are helping us to do, just how we compare with neighbors. And I also personally will be continued, I will continue to be interested in cities that have effectively not just said they're going to do this or have recently implemented it, but have implemented it and they're seeing what the results have been. So any, any real live, real live action information you can give us about how the policies are actually playing out would be, I'm sure appreciated not just by myself, but the rest of council as well. So Cheryl, luck with your tenure forward as the chair.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's been a pleasure to work with you here this afternoon. Thanks for the materials that were presented. You can trust that council looks at all that very carefully before the meeting. So even though the PowerPoint presentation wasn't there, we could still listen and learn from the, the time spent with you all today. So thanks very much. Linda, I want to thank you too for your continued work with this committee, which will go forward. Is that a yes?
Yes, that, that is a yes. And I, and just to add to what you said, I think, I think there is some, a high level of interest in the short-term rental owners that are here in Manzanita, obviously. So this will be, any discussion we have about short-term rentals will be well-publicized so that it's, you will know when, when the council is going to begin to do their deliberations.
Excellent. Okay, so I'm back to the agenda. And unless there is anything else for the good of order, I think the next thing I need to do is adjourn the meeting. Is there anything else? All right, well, thank you for the full participation. Thank you to the people who showed up to listen today. We appreciate that very much. And if you end up listening to this on a recording later, thank you to you as well. All right, we'll see you next time.